Good evening, everyone. This is the January 8, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Vanuken?
Here.
Marquardt? Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Burbick?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Seven present.
There are no items on the regular agenda that are being considered at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And again, for the benefit of those watching at home and those of you who have tried to fulfill your New Year's resolutions to come to more DeKalb City Council meetings, we'd like to just remind you that in most cases, the Committee of the Whole Meetings are informational. No specific action is taken. We do have some considerations tonight. The first one being the FY 2019 budget process. I'm going to let City Manager Anne Marie Gora start that, and I see Molly at the podium also.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Director Talkington and I are going to tag-team it, so I'm going to kick off this item and then turn it over to her to get into the nuts of the presentation. Excuse me. During the fiscal year 18 budget process, we started discussing towards the tail end launching the fiscal year 19 budget process and doing that right of way. And what we talked about and what was recommended is taking the very first meeting of the New Year, which is today, January 8th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and start talking about the fiscal year 19 budget process. What we've built collectively as staff into your agenda item tonight is trying to address and listen to all the themes that collectively you talked about during the last budget process of what you wanted changed moving forward. So what we're looking for tonight is some direction from you. Have we hit the mark? Are there additional things that you want included in there? And specifically to get your feedback. Our goal is to address your concerns and get that feedback so that we can revise the process if necessary. What we're doing is setting a foundation for the budget through a couple of key items. Number one, strategic plan and goal setting. And as you know, the goal-setting session with the council, and I'll say this publicly, has now been set for January 24th, and we will have more information going out publicly on that. But that's going to tie into the budget process. The council defines the goals. We build the budget based on that moving forward. Service level reviews. Director Talkington is going to talk about that, but we're going to get into specifics of each department. Financial policies review. That's kind of self-explanatory, and that information's been included in your packet. Five-year financial plan to establish budget strategy. This is where we really utilize the services of the Finance Advisory Committee to be able to look at the five-year financial plan and provide guidance. Budget review with focus on changes in line items. And that sample is included in tonight's budget item. I think it's Attachment I. The revised budget process will allow increased time for council review. So by starting now and by looking at the budget calendar, you can tell us, is this sufficient time or are there structural changes you want built in or made to the calendar? It also provides additional Finance Advisory Committee and citizen input into the budget process. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Director Talkington, and then as we go through either the budget presentation or the tail end, we're happy to answer any questions. And with that, Director Talkington.
Thank you. Good evening. I know you're excited to be back to budget talking again, right? We just started our fiscal year 18. We're on day eight, so welcome to that new fiscal year. But we're going to start on the FY 19 budget process. So here's really your high-level look of what City Manager Gora just went through. And so we're starting at that top part of this organizational chart, right? Where the vision of the city, where you set that strategic plan, the goals to the actions, services, and the tools, and kind of wrapped around that is your financial policies. So what we are doing first is you kind of start at the top of that tier. So as City Manager stated, your vision and goal-setting session will be on January 24th for council to really go through and decide what you want the city to kind of accomplish in your identifying short-term goals, which will be, what do you want to address in the next one to two years? Those decisions kind of help drive what you want in the budget process for what you want to see in the current budget and what you want in the next year budget. And then you're going to identify what long-term goals are and what you want to see those broad outcomes will be in 18 months to three and a half years. And that really drives future budgets. So when you get the why and what, now you need to look at the how. How do we achieve those goals in your strategic plan? Well, that's the services that are provided by the city. And so what I've taken is there needs to be kind of a refresh of what services do we provide and kind of a more fundamental understanding of what those services are because I do think there's a lot of terms that, you know, it's really me if I say financial terms that are not common to the everyday citizen. It doesn't come across very well. So we're going to try to do this budget basics video. I modeled it off of, or we will be, the city of Austin, Texas. And it really goes through and explains to someone what's the infrastructure? How much money did we put in it? What does economic development really mean? And what's that look like to our city? So we're going to build kind of this video just to build the basics. And so it's a budget basics video of what we're doing here at the city, but to kind of delve deeper into what those services are. Because, you know, video, you're not going to sit there and watch it for two hours on what city services are. That's the high-level kind of view. But we want to come back to council and have kind of budget workshops each month outside of these regular council meetings to get deeper into what those services are. So come back and spend time talking about what are our parking operations, right? That's one example. What do we currently do? What are potential issues? What are potential opportunities? Where can we go from there? Kind of set the stage of what our current services are and the framework around that. So you'll look at, soon you'll have the state of technology. It'll give you an idea of where we are with Information Technology Department, where we're going to be with economic development, and kind of the whole services that the city provides, including, you know, police and fire operations, which I know a lot of people think of first. So we'll take time during February to June to go over those and delve deeper into those services. And then we'll kind of do that social media push with the budget basics video because, one, it's for council, but it's also to educate the citizens. So we'll use, you know, those budget workshop meetings, our social media, and our Channel 14 GATV. So outside of the services, right, to kind of build what our services are and those tools that we use for the services. So your tools are the personnel, the commodities, your contractual services, all those line item things you see in a budget. You need a framework around how you get those. So the framework is your financial policies. So currently, the city has, the policies are listed on the slide. We have budget policy, fund balance policy. There's eight in total. But we'll bring those back up within these next few months. One, starting with the Financial Advisory Committee. Two, look at where we are with our current policies because, as you know, our property tax levy this year we adopted, and it doesn't adhere to our financial policies in our revenue expenditure policy and how we want to structure the property tax levy. So there should be some kind of review of that. Do we need to make changes? Are there other things we need to look at these policies for and kind of refresh them to the strategic goals the council's going to set in January and take a new look at that? So we'll start with the Financial Advisory Committee with all the policies, bringing recommendations, but then also get council feedback on all of those policies. And that will build kind of the framework around the how, the services that are provided. So financials. During this time, we have our five-year financial plan. The first draft of that was released to the Financial Advisor Committee last September, and we kind of worked at that, looking at kind of the five-year window of the general fund is where we focused a lot of our effort on. And we've had some discussions about the streets and fleet funding that was part of this plan. But it was more in the draft form. We haven't really finalized what we want that plan to look like and what we really want to use it for. So next Monday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, January 16th, we'll be meeting with the Financial Advisory Committee to start that discussion on the five-year plan. They had some revisions. I know they wanted to include a different, to add the town of Normal as comparable and some other feedback. We want to get what their revisions are, work with them, kind of streamline more of what that five-year financial plan will look like for the city council. But then we'll come back to council in June and July to look at that plan and set, kind of what do you want to do for the FY 19 budget, right? Now you have your strategic plan in place. You have your goals in place. We know what our current services are. Now we have this five-year financial plan that's identifying kind of where the general fund will be in five years with updated finances. So this 2018 fiscal year-to-date review that we'll do, that updated information will be built into that plan. We'll take the feedback we got from FAC and any citizens that are at those meetings and what you guys have provided on financial policies and kind of build all of that into the plan. And we'll go through that plan and really what the outcome of that plan then is, what do you want to set as your budget strategy? So from there, and this is the part that we really did in November this year, or this past year, was what was your goal for that budget? So it ended up for the 18 budget that we wanted to see expenditure reductions and no sales tax increase. But we did that more in November with city council. Well, now we're asking you to provide that feedback and that guidance of where your budget strategy will be in that July timeframe. So then we will take what we've heard and will bring some more financial information. So you'll have also, we'll give you the updated audit figures, and we'll give you the updated actuarial information, which will bring in the new investment rate of return so you can see how that works and what it looked like and how the changes that we made in the last budget affect that actuary reports for the police and fire pension funding. And then we'll have the audit figures. So that information will also get incorporated into what that plan is, and we'll put together what we're calling a budget preview. And that's the last two pages, Attachment I, of the report that you received. And the focus of that is really looking more at the line items. So you can see here on the example I showed from the FY 17 budget, kind of how you plus and minus to the FY 18 budget. And that's what we'll do for the budget preview this year. We'll start with where we are with the 18 budget and give you the plus and minuses by line item of how you get to that FY 19 budget. It'll be kind of a quicker look for city council earlier because it'll come out in September for you to see the changes that have been built into the budget based on everything we've gotten as feedback from council in July. But then there, you can look at those line items, the changes that are built in there. We can work, make revisions, and then come back with a proposed budget document after that. So we've refined it. We've done a lot of those steps that we were doing in November last year, early in the process. So by the time that I come back to you with the proposed budget document in late October, early November, we should just be really at smaller changes. We should have made some of those bigger changes decision in those last few months. And then we go forward with our kind of regular council meetings from there. So you'll have a joint meeting once the proposed budget is finished. See if that's, yeah, there it is. A joint meeting with the Financial Advisory Committee and City Council November 6th. And then from there, we'll go into the regular council meeting schedule. So you'll have your public hearing for November 26th. Then we'll have first reading and then second reading on the budget document in the first meeting in December, so it'll be December 10th. I bring up the property tax levy with this because that kind of flows, well, it has a lot of impact on what the budget is, but there's a lot of kind of timeline marks we have to hit with the property tax levy. So I called it out separately. So here you'll see, we need to adopt the estimate. Remember that's your ceiling on the tax levy on November 12th. If it's over 105% or 5% increase from last year, then we'll do all the truth and taxation notice requirements. If not, then some of those notices don't have to happen. But then we'll come back to you with the public hearing, the first reading in November 26 meetings, and then on December 10th to adopt that property tax levy. And then you'll go into your next fiscal year on January 1st of 2019. The schedule that's in the packet is put together, including an additional budget workshop for council. We've put together kind of a schedule for how FAC would work into that process to bring them more, bring them into the budget process more often for those reviews. I will say that that is tentative or it's more fluid. One, you know, I don't have start times listed on there. We can look at that because this is outside of your normal schedule to kind of look and see how that'll work, where the meeting locations are. It might make more sense when we're talking about public works operations to be at public works and see what they're doing. So there's some more discussions on where you want to have those meetings. And, you know, if we start going down this path and really feel there's just one area to focus on, we can then revise the schedule to focus on that area. So this is going to be a fluid process, but this is setting kind of a framework for us to start with for the year. But again, I think that by doing this, we're getting to you and addressing kind of like the concerns that council brought up during the last budget process. We're trying to get to you the information earlier so you have more time to digest it, kind of delve deeper into that information, and really try to align it to your strategic goals, our strategic plan and goals that you're going to set this year. So if you have any questions.
Before I turn it over to the city council and the alderman for their comments or questions, you know, we ask for this. We ask for more information. We ask to get involved in this budget process early on. And when I saw this item on the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, I was impressed with the length of it, the breadth of it. And so I think I commend you for giving us a good starting place because, as I say, we ask for it. With that, I'd like to turn it over to any questions or comments. Kate?
And I echo the mayor's comments. I'm wondering, since the Finance Advisory Committee is really included at so many steps, have you had a chance to preview this with them or get any feedback from the chair? Or because you're seeing this as kind of fluid, you know, you're putting it out there and we'll kind of work around schedules for them or?
Well, our next meeting with FAC is next week on Tuesday, and so I was going to bring this schedule to them at that time. I didn't go to FAC ahead of time because if you looked at the schedule and said, oh, no, that's really not what we wanted, I didn't want to set this foundation with FAC prior to actually getting council feedback. But we do meet with them next week.
Okay.
I would just add also that the plan is, if there's a particular item we take to FAC one month, we bring it to council the next month with a recommendation. So if they're reviewing specific financial policies in March, those recommendations will come to you in April so that you're dealing with the budget incrementally and not all at once.
Okay.
Excellent question, Alderman Noriko. Any other comments or questions of either Anne Marie Gora or Molly Talkington? Do I sense that there is consensus then that this schedule is something that, number one, meets what we had asked for? And secondly, is something that realistically we can hope to move through? Alderman Jacobson?
One of my preliminary concerns, as I know we had talked about during the budget process, was taking a look back at fiscal 18 through the first quarter of this year. And I don't see a real big focus on that in these timelines and in what we're talking about. Obviously, I appreciate that we're looking forward to 19 already, but again, I know it was one of my priorities through this budget cycle that we look back on 18 and see if there's any other things we can change in this current fiscal year to help start that process before the 19 budget even comes into view.
Yeah, you're right on. I mean, that is one of the things that we, I think as a council, wanted to take a look at is, hey, we passed the 2018 budget, but let's see what we need to do to either amendment to tweak it. Is that what your point is, David?
Correct.
Yeah. And I think you're right. We did talk about that. Any comments from Molly or Anne Marie in that regard?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. I really think I just maybe didn't expand enough on it, but I had the 2018 year in review. It wasn't at the first quarter. It was at six months. So the review would start with Financial Advisory Committee looking at those revenues and expenditures and building any of those changes into that five-year plan. But the five-year plan also includes the current year you're in. So you can make revisions at that time. And that's what I intended by looking at the 2018 year in review at the same time we're looking at the five-year plan, since they're going to be kind of hand-in-hand in the review, putting those together. So FAC will look at both of them, and the council will look at both of them. So you could make changes at that time.
Okay.
And I would just build on that, Mayor, of saying that there's a couple of key items we discussed with the council that were still fluid, to use the terminology. Number one, intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County in relation to the Peace Road Interchange Agreement, which at some point we'll be coming back to the council on that. Number two is the grant funding that we applied for in regards to the digital radios for the Fire Department, $200,000 grant. So I think it would be premature until we know how some of these items shake out. And keep in mind that every month as part of our council meeting, we update the council financially. It's listed on the consent agenda, but we can also wrap into this in some of the separate budget meetings and have Director Talkington specifically kind of give a high-level summary as to how the budget is trending. You can look at it monthly, but really part of the key is to look at it quarterly. How are the revenues? We had one of the revenues is coming in stronger based upon revised IML projections, but we'll happy to be able to do that at any point. But those two key items are going to have a direct impact on the budget and like to see where those end up going.
Okay. This gives us a good place to start. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Anne Marie. Our second item for discussion tonight, Public Works Director Tim Holderman will come forward to speak on refuse, recyclables, and yard waste contract update. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, residents of the city of DeKalb. We're before you this evening to talk about refuse and recycling contract. Our current contract will expire in August 31st of this year. Staff has been working on evaluating our options for going forward. We want to share those ideas with you and get your feedback today. Our presentation will begin with an overview of our current contract. We'll talk a little bit about the scope of services that are being provided, the fees associated with those. We'll look at comparables in terms of what other communities are paying. We'll look at service options going forward, and finally, we'll look at our schedule. With regard to our current waste vendor, it is Waste Management, Inc. They have been providing services for the city for a number of years, over 20 years, in fact. Their latest contract has been in effect for five years. As I mentioned, it will be expiring August 31st. There is a two-year extension available at 2.5% increase, and that's the increase that we've been experiencing over the last five years. The refuse and recycling services that we receive are explicit in the contract as well as the fees. Our current residential services are shown along with the fees on this slide. For refuse, we are a curbside and alley refuse and recycling collection. We have a 96-gallon tote for refuse and a 64-gallon tote for recycling. That's a part of our residential monthly fee. If the recycling tote, if a larger tote is desired, a 96-gallon tote, then $2.50 per month is charged to the resident. We also have bulk items. Up to two items can be collected per week under this contract. We have unlimited curbside waste collection, and there are three yard waste collection sites in the city. And for those services, residents are paying the fees as shown on this slide. Currently, we're at $18.91 per month. That is the charge that Waste Management charged this city, and I'll talk about that a little bit more detail in a minute. We also receive municipal services, including the refuse and recycling collection for 13 city-owned buildings. We have a prescribed price for assisting us in cleaning up some properties. We also have prescribed price for disposing of our street sweeping waste and our leaf collection. Those two items together represent about $35,000 per year on average. Waste Management also collects public receptacles. These are, there's 86 of them throughout the city that are, and those collection of refuse from those are included in the bill, in the residential fee, I'm sorry. Then we also have the central business district where we have garbage and recycling dumpsters at six different locations throughout the central business district. The difference on this is that the people who use those, the businesses who use those contract directly with Waste Management. But it was a part of the bid. The amount that they charge is part of the current contract. With regard to operations, there's not a direct invoicing relationship between the vendor and the residents. Rather, they go through the city of DeKalb so that we can consolidate the water, the sanitary, and the refuse all in one single bill. So that's a service that our residents are receiving. And so the $18.91 per month that is charged to the city is then increased for the service fee for the city labor associated with getting out the bills, collecting the bills, and doing the customer service. And so the total residence cost is $20.66. And the graphic there shows this, where the vendor is providing the service to the residents, that vendor is then invoicing the city of DeKalb and being paid by the city. And then the city combines the refuse and recycling with water and sanitary to create an invoice to the residents. Then we also collect those bills. There's about 9,000 of them per month and also providing customer service, answering all the questions associated with that service. So let's look at some of the comparables. These are the comparables, some of which were from the Sickett study that have been used in many other comparable evaluations. We see the name of the community on the left. The contracted service provider has provided, in addition, the single-family monthly fee. And then the latest rate increase is shown. And so you see, DeKalb is relatively low on that list. Notice that the three communities below us are within a dollar, whereas the communities above us jump up to a dollar and then up to three or four dollars. Also notice that the percent increase from the last rate on the communities above us are in the range, most of them three to four and a half, whereas the city of DeKalb and those below us are in the two to three range. So we're getting a pretty good deal, really. And it's, one of the options is to, as I mentioned, is to continue contracting with Waste Management for two additional years. One of the things that we must consider is that the level of service that our residents receive dictates the fee. And so this graphic illustrates the more services that you ask for, the larger the fee that the residents will pay for. We have pretty minimal, just basic services right now, including waste collection, recycling, bulk service, and yard waste collection. If we were to go to additional services, what some call premium services like e-waste, composting, and household hazardous waste collection at the curb or through some program, that would likely add additional expense. Case in point is the Waste Management program called At Your Door that the city of Sycamore took. That's been offered to us on top of our current contract at about $1.25 per month. So, and that's not something that we can pick or choose. That's something that all residents have to pay for, no matter what level of service they are provided for that service. So some of the things that we've come across that we think is needing more discussion is this concept of pay-as-you-throw. It can be as simple as having different-sized totes, 32, 64, 96, and being charged for the size of the tote that you have. It can get more complex than that as well, and there are pilot programs out there where there is a little bit more complexity, where we're trying to charge customers based on how much refuse they actually throw out. This electronics and household hazardous waste and bulk trash, of course, we have the bulk trash now, but those other two items are provided through the county and through the city on a month-to-month basis. We have electronics collection here for a fee. So if people want to use that, they can bring their item to City Hall first Saturday of the month, and they can pay a fee to have them disposed of. So we're offering those services, but they're not at your door or at your curb. Yard waste is another one. We have at-your-curb pickup. We also do loose-leaf collection. We also have three sites within the city with four dumpsters where people can put their landscape waste. So we have a high-level service for yard waste. We have three different ways that people can deal with that. And what I've been told is those dumpsters are at a premium. That price, although it's included, does tend to drive up that residential up that residential monthly fee. In addition, they are abused. Those three sites are, are commonly abused. We see on a regular basis through the summer, out-of-town landscape contractors dumping their waste on the weekends through there. So it has become a real problem. There are many Mondays and Tuesdays where our crew spent several, spent several hours sifting through that stuff and, and taking out the contamination from the, the yard waste. Other ideas, composting, and then the street impact fee, which we talked about during the budget process. So as you can see, there are a lot of questions to be answered, and so our next step is really to determine what services will be included in the RFP. And so we've got an idea, and that idea is to do a survey, to develop a set of questions that when our residents ask, answer these questions, it'll give us a good idea of the opinion of our community. It's not going to be statistically validated and all that, but it's going to give us, you as decision-makers for the community, a good idea. We would use our, our website. We would use newspaper, radio. We use social media to get that word out, and then use that to develop an RFP with services that we think are consistent with the survey results. The other way to do it is kind of the old-fashioned way, where staff and council kind of roll their sleeves and figure out what we want to include, beginning with the current RFP. What do we want to add? What do we want to take out? Do we want to use the current RFP as is, and just do an RFP process like that? And then third would be just to go ahead and, and take the option to extend the existing contract. We've developed a little schedule here which shows, including the survey, what the timeline might look like. And you see a couple of empty triangles there with the words "if needed." There's some cushion in this schedule that would take four or five months, depending on the amount that we have to use that cushion. But it basically is getting a survey, coming back to you, working through the details of the RFP, getting your final approval for the RFP, issuing that, receiving bids, awarding the contract, and then getting them, the new contractor underway. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and look forward to hearing which of those three options that you prefer.
Thank you, Tim. Alderman Fagan.
Excuse me. I think the survey would be the excellent way to, to approach it. Also, would you be asking the current level of service is adequate, or, you know, what, how they feel about their current service also in that survey?
Yeah.
All right.
Alderman Fanouken.
Tim, you and I have already had this discussion, but, you know, last time we bid this contract, there's only one bidder. What's his prospects for having additional bidders? Does this go around if we do decide to go back out to bid?
Yes. We've been approached by one company. You may know that DC Trash was purchased, the Cortland-based company was purchased by a Chicago firm, a firm out of Chicago, Lakeside Recycling. They have approached us. They're very interested in this contract.
Alderman Norrico.
Would it be possible in getting the bids that, some of these extra services are costed out separately so that, you know, for example, we might want to do one addition. It turns out residents really want one additional service, composting. As a gardener, I would be like, oh, composting, you know. And so that it isn't an all-or-nothing process, is it, in terms of accepting a bid? In other words, we can customize somewhat?
Yes.
Okay.
We could do that. Once you select the level of service that you want, then it's all, all-in. I mean, it's going to be the same for all residents.
Yes, I recognize that all residents.
Yes.
You know, basically pay for whatever the services are.
But I would just add that if the direction of the council is to go the request-for-proposal route, knowing that you want to open it up to see what other vendors are out there, that if that is the direction, when we bring the request for proposal to council, the more direction you can give in the structure of the RFP, the better.
Yes.
Because what's going to happen then is you're going to have a menu of items, and it's going to make it more confusing and more difficult. So the more policy direction you can give upfront on that RFP, the better it's going to be when you get the final product back.
Agreed. Alderman Faber.
To kind of support what the city manager just said, one of my, I guess one of my concerns is what's the survey going to look like, or how is the survey going to be crafted, worded? Because a lot of times you can lead respondents with the survey, so, you know, I might, I might want every service available, but then if you say it's going to cost, you know, X for electronics recycling, it's going to cost X for food recycling, I might start checking some of those off. So I don't know if the, the purpose, if the survey is going to include the, the à la carte menu pricing type of thing, so that people could, could see what it is, what their final bill is going to be in comparison to what they have today. Similar with the, I don't think we have white goods recycling today, other than we have to call Waste Management, and it's a $50 one-time fee, and I think in the backup material is, white goods recycling would be once per month, but you would pay a, a dollar fifty per month additional fee.
Yes. Yeah, that's the at-your-door service that Sycamore presently has. How's that work?
Well...
What have you heard? What have, what have we heard on that at-your-door service?
Yeah, I've heard that, that customers like it.
Uh-huh.
The, the, the service is one in which you call, and then you receive a container, a bag to put your items in, and then on, by appointment, they then come and pick that up. And so it's not just once, you know, once a week. You actually have to do a little legwork with it in terms of ordering the container and then letting them know when, when to pick it up. But I've heard, I've heard positive responses.
Good. Tony?
So again, I, you know, I think it's a great idea. I think the survey is fantastic. I'm just, you know, I guess some caution or concerns about how we word the survey, so.
Yes. And in your memo, Alderman Faber and other Aldermen, the, we kind of show the overall structure where we give some information, and then we ask the question. And in that information, I, I think we can tweak it a little bit more to be more precise. We were kind of careful not to put dollar values in there and say higher or lower, or more or less. But I think that we can do some research and get a range, you know, the at-your-door program for a dollar to $2 per month. Would that be something you're interested? You know, strongly agree, agree, disagree, that kind of thing. But I agree that it's not all about adding more service, because that will then increase the fee as well. So there has to be a balance, and that's what we want to try to communicate with our residents.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson.
I know since well before you were here and probably since I was here, we've had issues out with those landscape dumpster, dumpsters with out-of-towners coming in and using them. What are we doing to stop that? I mean, obviously, we have a fine posted out there. I know we installed cameras, and that was the answer before your time that we were told would, would be the end-all, fix-all out there. How are we going to prevent that from occurring, and are we actively enforcing those fines and fees against the people that are using it inappropriately?
We are when we catch them. The, it's my understanding, and Mark, you can help me here, that the camera system was not working or did not, didn't provide the detail that we really needed.
There was only one camera system that was installed because of budget constraints.
Okay.
Despite we're working with IT to expand the cameras and have better resolution, we can actually get a license plate and prosecute violators.
But we're talking about a, a $5,000 to $10,000 expense for these high-tech cameras that can, you know, find a license plate or, or, you know, be able to identify the perpetrator. And then, of course, you know, we're working with PD on that, and it just takes a lot of time and a lot of money.
Sure it does.
A lot of effort to get it done.
Alderman Fanouken.
Tim, one of the proposed survey questions in here mentions just that several additional services and addition to core services. Are you going to list what those additional services are so they have a better idea what they're, what we're talking about?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think if you put a dollar amount on those two bill, it would be...
Well, even if you don't necessarily put an exact dollar amount, you can just say that, you know, for each of these that you'd like to see, there will be an incremental cost. I think it will work out that way, too.
All right. Okay, well, Tim, thank you very much. I appreciate your report.
So Mayor, if I could, it, it sounds like to me that the council is in concurrence with the survey, given some of the comments?
Yes.
Part two, Mayor, before we go off this item then, is we will look for a direction as far as consensus to move forward on an RFP. Are you either happy with the current vendor, or do we open it up? Because if we look at opening it up, then that requires time for staff to be able to put that together. So if there's consensus for an RFP, we'd appreciate knowing that tonight.
I think so.
Yes.
Alderman Fanouken.
While I appreciate the opportunity to go ahead and open up the contract for rebidding, as you look at some of the other numbers available with both the current and other potential vendors, a lot of the other prices are higher. And if we're looking at only 2.5% each of the next two years, maybe we'd be best served to continue this contract for now, and then to, at that point, you know, a year out from that expiration, begin to work on a new contract. I just think that when you look at it in terms of the dollars and cents and the potential for a much higher cost going down the road, I think we might want to at least consider renewing.
Alderman Jacobson.
What is our break clause? I mean, how much notice do we have to give them to go ahead and, and break the contract? Can we do it concurrently? Can we leave the option of the 2.5 on the table while we're going through an RFP? And, or do we have to give them a year of advanced notice?
We can look at what our timeline is for delivering the notice of intent to exercise the option and see if it's possible to do those coterminously, and we can report that back to council.
Appreciate it.
I would just add, the one thing that you would want to think about your decision-making process, and I'll look at Director Holderman, is there was an element in the report that included looking at, looking for a contribution for street improvements that other municipalities have done. So in our current structure of the agreement, we don't have that. So, I mean, if you don't want to make the decision tonight, it just, we may not be able to negotiate that portion if you wanted to keep status quo with 2.5%.
Alderman Fagan.
Well, considering we're coming off a deficit, I think we've got to have our due diligence to at least go out for a bid. And as Anne Marie said, you know, the other contracts that these cities have do have addressed the situation with our roads. So I would think it'd be smart for us to go after an RFP.
Yeah, Bill. Alderman Fanouken.
Well, just that my one concern is, though, that if we're charging them to pay for the roads, aren't they just going to put that back into their fees, and then that just goes back on top of our residents? So I think that's something that we want to think very carefully about before we impose that as part of an RFP or contract.
And, and it has been, it has been described to me that we probably could get a better price, and that the balance of that savings could be used to put back into the streets.
Alderman Jacobson.
I, I think that's the only way you guarantee that you're not adding a significant cost. If you're looking at someone like Hoffman Estates at $13, and we could get a contract rate out here, which we don't know until we do an RFP, especially now with DC going to a much larger firm and being an otherwise local contractor.
Right.
Again, I think that's, i- if you're asking for that in the RFP, they're going to tack it on to the customer. That's how they, they pay their bills on the backs of the customer, as most companies do. Whereas if we can find some significant savings, or even some relatively significant savings, we could decide that if we would like to keep a holdback of some of that savings and say, hey, it's going from $20 down to $15, when in reality, it may be $13 or $14, and we're keeping a holdback to make sure that money is being directed back into roads. I think that's the only way you can guarantee that it's not being, that, that we're pushing for the lowest contract rate and still meeting that need to put back into the roads.
So you'd be comfortable with an RFP? Pat, you certainly would. Bill, you're sort of...
I would, I would be comfortable with it, but I'd like us to give careful consideration just renewals.
Okay. Consensus on an RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
I really like 13, 25 a month.
Yeah.
I really like that. I want to be at the bottom of the list.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. You're going to stay right there, because our next item on our committee of the whole agenda tonight is snow and ice removal plan. Okay?
Mayor and council, residents of the city, with the snow season upon us, we wanted to share our snow and ice plan with all of you, in hopes of increasing the community's awareness of the level of activity that's going on when we are in a snow and ice storm, why that's being taken like it is, and, and how residents can help. Presentation this evening will begin with talking a little bit about our objectives and level of service. We'll go into and spend most of our time in operations and resources, and then end up with some ideas for residents to help us. Our primary objective is to maintain safe vehicle and pedestrian travel within a reasonable time from when the snowstorm starts. Those two photographs show the best level of service on top, which is bare pavement, curb-to-curb. Water running is a colloquial term that we use, and the minimum level of service is packed snow. It is drivable, but have to be a little careful when you're going through that area. Our preparation for snow and ice storms begin in October, November, really, when we're looking at getting our equipment and our supplies ready. Our equipment, our, our trucks, more than 20 pieces of heavy equipment, salt spreaders, plows, dump trucks. You know we have an aged fleet. We're getting that fleet in top shape, ready for snow and ice. Having our supplies, our salt, our pretreatment chemicals have to be on, on the ready. You know that we're a part of the state contract, and we have to take at least 80% of what we order, but not more than 120. So we're always monitoring how much salt we're using. Staffing, staff come and go. We're sometimes short when we're waiting to fill a position. We may have someone out, long-term disability. We may have other circumstances. So we're always monitoring our equipment, our supplies, and our staff. And then, as we get closer to the season, we begin monitoring the snow, the forecast, what the weather conditions are. And the graphic here shows one of the tools that we use, which shows temperature, wind, the expected rate of snowfall, the duration of the snowfall, and even the time of day and the day of the snowfall. Because snowfalls on Saturday morning can be treacherous to residents getting out. Snowfalls on Christmas Eve can be treacherous for travel around the city. And so all these considerations are being given. And, and then lastly, as we, as the snow approaches, we're responding. Typically, we're going out first and doing a pretreatment on bridge decks, because they freeze first, so we want to make sure they don't freeze. And so that pretreatment chemical helps to keep it from freezing. Then we're going out and salting, and then plowing, and then, and then cleanup. That's really the, the series of the operation. And always, there's always different variables, and so we're always making changes on the fly in terms of forecast being redone, in terms of other changing conditions. And I want to emphasize that this is not done for two, three days, or a week, or even a month. This is our life for four months out of the year, where we're living the snow and ice conditions, because we are ready at a moment's notice to spend eight, 12, 16 hours in plow trucks addressing these snows. Just to give you a little example, we do categorize our storms from just a trace to two inches is category one. Two is two to six inches. Category three is six to 12, and then category four is greater than 12. And what we did, we pulled off some statistics for single-day snowfalls for the last 50 years, and just looked at the number of occurrences in those different categories. And so in that zero to two... And so in that zero to two range, about 18 times on average through the season that occurs. Two to six is four to five times. That six to 12 is every other year, and then once every 25 years is that greater than 12. And that, and that's borne out by the, the one-day max over the last 50 years was 15 inches, the two-day max was 19 inches. So we get an average of about 36 inches per year, and most of that comes in December, January, February, where we average about eight to 10 inches per year. But this kind of gives you an idea of how many times we have to initiate an operation. Typically, it's, you know, 20, 25 times, even in an average year. So when we have an exceptional year, we, we do a lot more than that. And we're prepared for these storms, although we do have limited resources. So there is a mega-storm that I can describe on paper that we would have a very difficult time without expending all of our resources of handling. And we'll talk about that, more of that in a minute. In terms of our operation, we do have priorities. The main roads and the, and the snow routes are our highest priorities. They're showing red and green in this map. And depending on how hard it snows, it can take two and a half, three hours to cycle through those major roads. So if it's snowing heavy, we have to stay on those main roads to keep them clear, and we can't come off and go to the residential collectors, which is our next priority. Sometimes we'll go two, three cycles before we can jump off and go to the greens, the residential collectors. And so that means that some residents may experience six, eight hours or more without seeing a plow truck coming down their street. And certainly, we recognize that, and we have to have priorities in order to keep the, the main roads and the snow routes passable. Once we get our collector routes done, then we'll come into residuals. And we can do what's an up and back in some of these, where we're not trying to go curb-to-curb, where we're just making them passable. But I want to let residents know that we do have limited resources, and so our response has to be limited and measured in response to that. This map shows the six snow routes along with the Central Business District route, and I use this to describe our resources. We have 15 primary drivers on these residential snow routes. We use three tandem trucks and 12 single-axle dump trucks, all with plows and spreaders. We have one spare dump truck. And thank you very much for appropriating the, the money to, for a new dump truck this year, because you know what the condition are of some of those dump trucks. So we very much appreciate that recognition. And then we have a loader that we share with the airport to load up the salt. In the Central Business District, we have two drivers, one on a, one, both of them on a one-ton dump truck. What I want to tell you about these 17 guys, and they are all guys for right now, these resources that we use, they range in years of experience from 13 to over 30. The average number of years of experience is 22. What does that mean to us as residents? It means that we have excellent skilled drivers behind the wheel on those dump trucks. They know their routes, they've experienced a variety of conditions, and they have a very low accident rate. So that work crew that we have out there is doing an excellent job for the city. The remaining public work staff are doing parking lots and filling in when necessary. We also have a water system we have to run. So if we have a main break, three of these guys who are on plows have to come off and go to the main break. And so that's a part of decision-making as well, when we get into these long-duration events, that we only have a limited number of personnel and we have to do a number of activities. Some of the debriefings that I've seen with snow operations that have failed have included those secondary and tertiary needs for the staff, like, like water main breaks. And so we want to be very cognizant of that. Also, one of our mechanics will be behind the wheel this year, and the other one will be in the shop doing repairs. We also have the airport that we want desperately to keep that clear. And then we have a contractor who's helping us with the sidewalks in the Central Business District and the arterial sidewalks. Again, thank you, City Council, for appropriating those fees to help us with the Central Business District and that contractor, because without that, our threshold for being able to address snowstorms would have dropped significantly if we would have had to do those, the Central Business District sidewalks. To give you an idea of what a, a snowstorm looks like in terms of level of effort, I showed this two-week period from the beginning of 2016. There was a total of 4.4 inches, and you could see that Saturday and Sunday is about 2.1, and then Monday, Tuesday was 1.7. That was 3.8 of the 4.4 were those two events, but then we had several other events. And notice that those events were Saturday, Sunday, so we had to pay a lot of overtime. Guys were behind the plow for six to eight hours on Saturday, and then another four to six hours on Sunday. Then they came right back to, Monday night after they left work, because it started snowing, and they worked well into the next day on Tuesday. And so you can see that even with a 4.4 inch, when it's spread out like that, you can have a lot of time where the guys are coming back late at night and working. That's why sometimes during the day, we actually send our crews home to get rest, because they've been working for two and three nights in a row. In this particular example, we did have 27 employees who worked 480 hours of overtime and 265 hours of regular hours. We're, and so this is a very expensive proposition, but it's one that our residents have come to expect and one that we certainly at Public Works take a lot of pride in. So in terms of residents, what residents can do to help us, and this picture really tells, tells it all, with about a foot, six inches to a foot on each side of this plow as it's going down the roadway. And that's tough, and that takes a lot of skill to do that. But residents can observe the restricted parking, particularly the snow routes, where more than two inches have to leave, have to leave the parking available. Maintain a safe distance from our plows, typically five car lengths back of the plow. Please do not place snow in the street when you're, when you're doing your shoveling. Please don't just dump it out into the street. And lastly, if you have any questions or any concerns, please call us, 748-2040, and we'll be happy to address your questions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before I turn it over, I received a text from our city manager on Sunday afternoon advising me that you had made the decision to throw some salt down and have the guys go out on Sunday afternoon, knowing that it may not have developed. But I commend you for doing that, because we were ahead of the game, apparently, and I thank our folks at Public Works, and that was a good call. I realize, you know, as a layman, the weather isn't always perfect, and when you see ice possibly coming in, you just don't know whether or not it's going to develop or not. So I wanted to publicly thank you for, for making, you made the right call, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, now with, with that, any other comments or questions of Tim?
Okay.
Alderman Noriko.
I guess the recent unbelievably cold weather has made this an issue. What do we use when, you know, the wind chill is 20 below? What do we use for de-icing?
Yeah, it's salt, but it's pretreated salt.
Oh.
So we actually, if you see the spinners behind the dump truck, behind the plow trucks, there is pretreatment chemicals being injected into that salt before it's being spread, so that it will stick and so that it will enhance its melting properties. But, Mark, help me, what is the temperature at which even that pretreatment doesn't help anymore?
Well, you can, we use a, it's a compound of salt brine, calcium chloride, and it's a derivative of the beet industry.
I thought there were beets in that.
And we can get it down to, where we're still melting ice at 30 below zero. Now, if you were to just put dry rock salt down, once you hit down to 25 degrees, the capabilities are less and less as it goes down.
Mm-hmm.
Tim, I know you wanted to make a comment or two on this triumvirate sitting here in the front row.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
And Mayor, thank you for your compliment. But one of the things Superintendent Espy taught me shortly after I arrived on December 14th in the middle of snow and ice season was, do not ever underestimate snow and ice. And he taught me that we always have to be ahead of the storm.
Absolutely.
And so I've used that, and, and that call was made by Andy Rye, by the way, and I was just passing it along. But I do want to let City Council and our residents know that Mark Espy, our Superintendent for Streets, is going to be retiring. His last day will be Wednesday, and after 27 years of service for the city of DeKalb and 12 years at Street Superintendent, I want to personally thank Mark for his assistance when I first came as Public Works Director, and on behalf of all the residents of the city, to thank him for his work and service for the city. So if you would join me...
I think a round of applause would be appreciated.
Mark is retiring, and Andy Rye will be standing in as our Street Superintendent. And I also want to let City Council know that as a result of some of our budget cuts in our 2018 budget, that we have gone through a reorganization. Our street, our street utilities and support services divisions, which were three divisions, have been consolidated into a single division. And that division will be led by our new Assistant Public Works Director, Brian Favor. Brian will be working eventually with two supervisors, once we get that job described and posted. But for the time being, it's really Brian and Andy are running those, what were formerly three divisions, now a consolidated division known as the Public Works Operations Division. So thank you, Mayor.
Rye, Favor, and Espy, three local boys, really appreciate all you guys do. Let's give them a hand. Okay, any further comments? If not, public participation is the next item on our agenda. Michael, did you want to speak in the City Council portion? You want to speak now?
No.
We, no, we will go into executive session following our City Council meeting.
Well, I, I know, but that's on your agenda as being next, so. I wanted to remind council that when you have, you're, part of the thing, it says executive, review of executive, in the executive council, is it's review of people who work for you. When you're doing contractors, you need to make sure that when you start talking about the contracts, such as the city attorney, those contract discussions are in the open. I'm really kind of concerned about the condition of the city records, and I'm also working on the county, too, so I'm not picking on just the city, okay? I've talked to Mark Petrowski about the Local Records Act and why we don't have a Local Records Commission yet. He and I have been talking repeatedly. You cannot destroy city records without going through a Local Records Commission, so you're deleting emails that have to do with city business. You cannot without going through the Local Records Commission. We had this problem at NIU. We had to go back and, I don't know if Mike knows exactly what happened. They killed our email system temporarily, made us a two-gigabyte limit, and people were archiving data. And now we can't unarchive a lot of it, because it's now stuck and, because we don't have the same email server. You must think about these things in the long run. And you're, I think, one of the things is that you need experts in those type of things as a council. You need lawyers that are experts in those areas to discuss with, and they can't be, you have to make sure that you use an independent lawyer that doesn't have any self-interest, because a lawyer cannot serve more than one client at a time. It's unethical for them to do that. Okay? So I hope that you guys take that in mind, because I know there's some discussions going on in the background about some of this, these issues about contracts and contract legal. So I hope this, that you take this as advisory from a person who's lived through some of these issues at my own institution. We're still trying to clean up the mess that was made at NIU by the previous president. And I'm hoping that you guys also understand that these type of things are also some of the issues you guys are seeing, data, data collection, data records. All these type of issues are going to still be a problem here. I've been spending a lot of time at NIU working on the Open Meetings Act issues with my university council, and I see some of the same tendencies in all the public bodies, the tendencies to being secret, privacy, feeling that people are looking over your shoulder, you don't really want them to give you advice when you're working sometimes. But really, I'm just trying to say that it's all, we're all public servants here. I work for the state of Illinois, and you guys all work for the, in this capacity, work for the citizens of DeKalb. And I hope we all can just kind of work this out and figure out what's going on.
Okay.
And make sure that all the records of the city are on foable city hardware, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We have one other person who wanted to speak during the committee of the whole meeting. The same last name. It's Misty Haji Shee. Misty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And no, I'm not going to speak about the same thing. Imagine that. Same last name, totally different subjects. What I want to talk about is tonight's meeting of the COW. And first of all, I'd like to say that I am very happy to see that there will be more budgetary meetings, one a month. What a revelation. In the past, the council has said that they were going to have quarterly meetings. To my knowledge, those haven't happened, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would like to see more meetings working on things in the background, so that the meetings don't take so long during your regular meeting sessions. That's what we do on the county board, a lot of it's done in committee, and it does work very well. Now, that being said, you talked about these meetings, and the Open Meetings Act says that you have to put the meetings in the first of the year. You have to list all of them unless they're a special meeting. And that's fine, you can have special meetings, you can have as many as you need to, but when you have a special meeting, you are limited to only the things on the agenda for that special meeting. You can't just talk about something else. So that's something to keep in mind. So I would like to see a listing of those meetings, so that I can put them on my calendar, and if I can't make them, I can watch them on TV, so I just wanted to point that out. For budgetary purposes, I know that we were talking about budget, and that's something that I work very closely with on the county board. I would like to see an audit of last year's spending for streets, especially in the Tiff district. What was budgeted versus what was actually spent? Because to my knowledge, those aren't even equal. And if we're going to talk about putting a budget out, we also need to look at how a budget was spent. I'm using Tiff as an example, but it could go for anything. So when you're looking at, how are we going to spend the money this year, you need to know, did we spend it correctly the way we planned last year? Because if we had needs that we didn't know about, or something like that, we need to put those in plan for this year. Also, I would like to see how the Tiff dollars, when you look at how they're spent, what do we get back for those? Is there some kind of set of numbers that we can come up with that says we spent $100,000 here and we got X number of dollars in benefits to the city in some form? They don't all have to be actual dollars, because sometimes we work in, in-kind type things, or in advertising, or something that looks good for the city in marketing, so something like that. My final statement today is I would like to see the agenda be put on TV prior to the meeting, on TV 14, so for the Cal, right before it, to put the agenda up there, so that people can say, oh, okay, because I'm about to tune in, I'd like to know what they're going to talk about. So put it up, you know, a few hours, maybe a day ahead of time, and the same for the City Council. And I would also like to make use of some of the wonderful charts that I've seen. I'm going to pick on tonight simply because we had one that was... had one that was really good with snow and ice. This is how much snow we get. Here are the main roads. Those, that's a type of information that you guys can put out there that would educate the citizens on what it is that you do. It's very simple because they're self-explanatory. Now, not all graphs that you put together are self-explanatory, but those two are. And so I would like to see a better use of Channel 14 in this type of stuff that you're talking about here to let everybody know what it is that you're up against and what you do. Thank you very much.
Misty, we are here to serve, and thank you for those suggestions. Those will not fall on deaf ears, believe me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other items on our agenda tonight. For the benefit of those who did look at the agenda to see a recess for executive session, we will consider that, consider that recess after our City Council meeting tonight. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. We will convene as a City Council at 6:25. 6:25. Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Dwayne.